Welcome to our meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for all for being here. Before our meeting officially begins, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Remind us that we are not only leaders but also servants, that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out, listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong. Mr. Cresser, would you call her over, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Commissioners, you have for you the minutes of our meeting of August 12th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 12th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We are going to address with great delight our Pride Award nominees and winners tonight, and we're going to take the audience participation out of turn since we have so many folks here for that purpose. I understand Mr. Flor, our neighborhood coordinator, and young man extraordinaire, if you have some initial, you have an introduction to all of this, and we'll take it from there and take your lead.
Absolutely. So just a few brief words on the Pride Awards, and thank you, Commission President and the Commission, for allowing us to present today and recognize all these folks who are making a difference in their neighborhood every day by either maintaining their homes and/or businesses immaculately or by making substantial improvements to them. So, just a little bit of background. The Pride Award program was resumed by staff in 2017 to help recognize folks who, as I just said, have either substantially improved and/or immaculately maintained their homes so whether, and/or businesses. So whether that be a new business, for example, moving into a formerly vacant place like one of our winners is tonight, a business expanding, another one of our winners, or folks just taking really good care of their houses, that is what we are here to recognize tonight, and obviously, based on attendance and turnout, the residents are excited as well to be recognized. So with that, I think I will turn the podium back over to the Commission President, and just note that there will be images of each of the nominees and winners as they are called.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flor. Again, we're delighted to have you here tonight. Thank you for showing up to personally accept the certificate if you're a nominee and the plaque if you're one of the winners. I just want to say something about this. The care that you have extended to your city, to your properties, is what makes the difference between just a place to put your head down at night and a place to make money and being a real community, and that's the difference that you really are causing. It's all of that, and without all of you doing what you're doing in your homes or at your homes and in your businesses, this isn't a great city, doesn't, won't achieve the full potential that we all want to see it achieve. So, thank you for all of that. Mr. Flor, what is the order? Are we proceeding with the nominees first?
Yes.
Okay. So if you'd come up, I'd be happy to shake your hand. I'm sure the other commissioners would as well, but our first nominee are Carolyn and James Bean. And next is Barb and Eric Beck.
Ross is here.
Ross? Ross Besch here? Oh, I think we, that's okay, you're fine.
He's mixing the whole thing up.
Roll with it, yeah. That's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Ross.
Kelly Canterbury?
Miss Canterbury is here, I believe.
Kelly Canterbury here this evening?
Oh, no, sorry.
No, okay. Well, we will get her certificate to her as well as all the others who were unable to make it tonight. Anita and Tim Clawbaugh, I don't see them, okay. Charles and Kathleen Phaylor. Tamra Humphrey, I did not see Tamra here. Richard and Michelle Keller, are they here? No, okay. David Smith and Susan McFerrin, please. Tanny and Drew Meredith, I don't see them here. Phil and Sarah Montgomery. Gilbert and Sally Palmer. Patrick and Diane Printy. Karen Rose Kelly. I suppose I should be reading the address as well because it gives you a sense of just how widely distributed these are throughout the entire city. So I should have been doing that up until now, I'll do that going forward. Susan and Tony Sidoti, 111, 1117 Campbell Street, are they here? No, okay. John and Kay Beath? Beath, excuse me, 1606 West Madison Street.
Good job.
Thank you for beautifying our city.
John, good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sorry, I stumbled over your line.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
One in City Class H88, ten times.
Mr. Waddington points out that Mr. Beath is a longtime City Golf Champion as well. Ten times, he says.
Yeah, ten times.
Cheryl and Michael Wall, 2223 Columbus Avenue. Joe and Henrietta Whelan, 424 McDonough Street. Oh, okay. Joe, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next is Andrew and Andrea Whitman, 1202 Fifth Street. And we have a nomination for Brandon Wilson, 735 Meg Street. Mr. Wilson here? I'm not sure. Oh, okay. And we have two nominations, one for Erica and Vicky Weiss for 1005 Putnam Street and County Imported Motors and Tropical Tents, 1710 Tiffin Avenue. Are the Weisses here? No? Okay, thank you. That was a doubleheader for commercial and residential, so we like those folks especially. And then a nomination for John and Valerie Parker for Open Way Yoga at 2007 West Water Street. And our final nomination before we get to tonight's winners is, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, Paradiso Management for the Ashley Group at 6, I'm sorry, 165 Jackson Street. Is there a representative from the Ashley Group here tonight? We thank you for their investment as well. Now, finally, we want to turn to the winners, and I want to show you what is in the bag that Mr. Lockhart is going to help me distribute to each of the winners. This is the plaque that is proudly displayed a lot of homes around the city and some of the last from our former winners. Only difference is the year is updated, so that's what's in the bag itself. Lockhart promised that he would do his best Van of White invitation, and with that, the first winner, first winners are Christopher and Lucas, Christopher Lucas and Shauna Sage Armstrong, 519 Wayne Street. Are those folks present? Okay. And then Dana and Jason Pitcher, 1120 Wayne Street. Thank you, congratulations, and thanks for your investment. Next are Pat and Ron Mashari for their beautiful home at 524 Wayne Street.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Many of you may know Mr. Mashari as a longtime teacher and administrator at Sandusky Schools, and we thank you for that as well. I see him at church, so that's where, that's where we met. Next is Amanda Smith and Bradley Raznick, 313 East Adams Street. Congratulations, thank you, I'm sorry, I got the name wrong, I apologize. Okay. Next, there's an award for Jack and Cheryl Wall for 602 Pearl Street. And those were our residential winners. Next are our three commercial winners. The first is for St. Peter and Paul Church at 510 Columbus Avenue, and I understand accepting on behalf of the church are John Lawrence and Brian McGuffey.
Thank you. John, thank you. Amen, thanks.
Brian, thank you. The fact that Brian is the music director at my home parish has nothing to do with the outcome here, since I forgot to vote, so. So, next is Gunlock Sheet Metal, and here to accept for Gunlock is Andy Gunlock. Appreciate your being here. Great story with Gunlock Sheet Metal, they had an opportunity to move outside of Sandusky, and this year chose to double down and invest and expand in Sandusky, and we very much appreciate the difference that Gunlock and many other businesses in Sandusky have made to expanding employment and retaining employees that we have in Sandusky. Next, and finally, our Sandusky State, our winner is the Sandusky State Theater for Sandusky Segway, and here to accept are Jim Irvin and Dick Reese.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Dick. Congratulations. Good to see you guys.
Well, again, thank you to all of our winners. I really do mean it, when you make the difference between just a place to live and make money and a real home. And I think a final round of applause for all of our winners. You're welcome to stay for the many hours that we'll be here following, but if you choose to leave, we will take no offense. We're going to turn next to another happy occasion, yes, if you close that door, thank you. Will the door close, please? Thank you. Next, Chief, I understand that Sandusky Police Department is pleased to present a new offer, new officer to be sworn in tonight, and it's a tradition that was started recently, and we very much appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. We have Officer Mason Die that's going to be sworn in tonight. Oh, there was a program since June of last year on the murder of the school district. A neat story, his father's here, he's been a correction officer with Erie County Sheriff's Office for over thirty years, dedicated service to that fine agency over there, so it's, I was able to watch my sons get sworn in to law enforcement, I know it's a problem for his mom and dad, so. On this day, you are here, my commission, as a peace officer, to serve as a police officer for the city of Sandusky, Ohio, pursuant to 737.02, the Highland West Code, and 127.03, the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky. As such, you shall affirm the following, please raise your right hand. I, Mason Die, solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Sandusky, Ohio.
I, Mason Die, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Sandusky, Ohio.
To which I am appointed, and to the best of my ability, will discharge the duties of this office.
To which I am appointed, and to the best of my ability, will discharge the duties of this office.
Congratulations, and stay safe. So as with the department, we have the badge for Mason, and his father's going to pin his badge on him.
All right now, now we've finally turned to audience participation, thank you for waiting patiently. While we went through some of the ceremonial aspects of the evening tonight, so anyone wishing to address the Commission on any of our pieces of legislation on our agenda, please tap to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, staff. Basically, four questions on the agenda this evening. Under item number F, which is the consent agenda, the question would be, does the amendment include any cost increases to any of the projects listed? Under item number three, which is the playground equipment, I believe, for the here in Park, the question would be, what's going to happen to the existing area that the playground equipment is currently located? It's my understanding that the new playground equipment is going to be located over where the former Ball Diamond was, next to the splash pad. And item number five, which is spending an additional, right around $80,000, maybe more, on the shoreline at Lyons Park, the concern here is, is that back when the Lyons Park project, master plan was completed some eight years ago, it was brought before this Commission and other city committees that the shoreline was quickly deteriorating, and it's unfortunate that we let it go that long. We're back to the same from eight years ago, where we have a cliff at that location based on inaction by this Commission and previous Commissions, and now what we're doing is, it's going to be better looking rock that we're going to put in, it's not going to be concrete, but again, I'll reiterate, like I've done in the past, we had an opportunity, there's a break wall there that is underwater, that people have hit it, and we had an opportunity to rebuild that and prevent further erosion to where we're at today, and those steps were not taken. If any of you have not seen the master plan from ten years ago of the Lyons Park area, I would encourage you to do so, and any future Commissioners that might get elected in January or November, that we need to go back and find a way to protect shoreline, I'm sorry, Lyons Park shoreline from further erosion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwauner.
Tom LaMarche, 206 48th Street. First, congratulations on the new hire of Police Officer Mason Die, be safe out there. On item number three of today's agenda regarding the purchase of the playground surface for here in Park for $75,453, the bid states that the curing time process is 72 hours, of which security needs to be provided, and it says, "by owner or contractors," so my question is, which is it? The owners being the city or the contractors? That's kind of vague there. Also, it says that the installation is figured at non-pervailing wage rates, and so does that mean that the project could get rolling along and there could be a change order for cost overruns if someone were to challenge those wages being paid? Item number one on the agenda is a lease agreement proposal for Sandusky Bay Company. I'm just wishing Steve and Tammy Hammer, who I don't have a clue who they are, a successful venture, and enjoy the long, many hours that you're going to endure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaMarche.
My name is Marcy Platt, I live at 1217 Columbus Avenue in Sandusky, and I guess my comment is, under the budget amendment number two, about the appropriation amendments, are required to update the budget for previous actions of the city. Examples included but are not limited, Shoreline Drive and Jack Street Pier. My reason I bring that up is that I believe at the last city commission, this commission voted to give Lake Erie Shores and Island a $15,000 grant for a sign. I'm a little bit confused about the relationship with Lake Erie Shores and Island, and the only reason I say this, they gave us $50,000 for the pier, they're also involved with the signage, and now they're asking us for money. Why don't they just keep their money and we'll keep our money? It just seems strange that people give you money and then they ask you for money. It just seems like an ethical type of thing going on there. I don't know, Lake Erie Shores and Island, I don't have anything to do with them, but it just seems to me that somebody shouldn't give you something and then expect something in return. Why are we giving them money back for money that they gave us? So it just seems like an ethical type of situation. It may be something that's done all the time, but on the surface, it just doesn't look very proper, doesn't look ethical. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Platt. Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission on any of our regular agenda items? If not, then we have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, motion is approved. Commissioners, we have our several consent agenda items. Are there any items that are currently on the consent agenda that you wish to have placed on the regular agenda? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to, with respect to the consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Moved to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda should take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second. Mr. Cresser, I know I might not have ordered just a little bit there, but would you present all of those items that are on the consent agenda so that the Commission and all the audience members have that in front of them, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is the second reading of an agreement with the State Item A is the second reading of an agreement with the state of Ohio Office of the Auditor for preparation of the December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty-one comprehensive annual financial reports. Item B is the second reading to approve membership in the NeoRide Council of Governments and Easy Fair Mobile Ticketing App for the Sandusky Transit System. Item C is the second reading for a vacation of a ten-foot alley located west of Wildman Street on Second and Third Streets. Item D is an amendment to the endorsement agreement with Constellation New Energy for Opt-In Natural Gas Aggregation Program for city residents and small commercial customers. Item E is for the disposal of unneeded equipment through an internet auction. And item F is a budget amendment, the second to the general appropriations ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Cresser. Commissioners, any questions or comments on that would be quite welcome. Before we, before we recognize anybody, Mr. Soloway, there was a question asked about whether the budget amendment number two includes any cost increases, and I appreciate if you would reiterate what you've shared with the commission on prior occasions, and when we've been putting this on the consent agenda, because as explained, this is an accounting issue. These are not any additional or new or different expenditures, that's just that the commission has taken action on various pieces of legislation over the course of the last year. We had a budget that we approved earlier. We periodically go back and amend the budget to reflect the actual decisions that we've made. Is that fair statement?
That's absolutely correct. There's no cost increases, specifically on the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive. Those pertain to the OWDA loan agreements that we just finalized, I believe, last month, so we were kind of waiting to get some conclusion on the amounts on that, so that's typically, all the amendment does is line up to what the ordinance that already approved the contracts for previously have done.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no increases to any, this amendment does not include any cost increases to any projects.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Perhaps this will be cleared up for the public, if you just, for a moment. We talk about moving money from one place, and I understand the reason for it. Where's it come from, and why does it have to be moved? If we, if there's some short answer that would clarify, so people wouldn't have to continue to ask us every time this comes up, just to kind of...
It's not a matter of it being moved, it's just the money wasn't appropriated to the portions that were going to be paid out of the two different funds. We were waiting to have some conclusion to what those amounts were going to be, because we still were working with OWDA on the loan agreement. So it's basically us budgetarily adding those money, adding that amount to the system to match up what the commission had prior approved with the ordinance. And as we mentioned, I think, a couple of years ago, this is something, well, we've decided to try to do something, do this every other month or so to sort of catch up on any, you know, things come up during the year that we don't anticipate. The Cedar Point Water, the Water Main Change Order is one example. That's not something we would have known about in any part of the original budget process. So that's money that went through the process, commission's approved, well, now we need to add that amount to the budget so we can pay that invoice. That's really all it is. If that makes sense.
Additional questions or comments? If not, then Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances, please.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances, please.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Those ordinances are adopted. Ms. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is a one-year agreement with Steve and Tammy Hammer, doing business as Sandusky Bait Company, for the operation of a retail business for the sale of bait and tackle, convenience items, food, beverages, and fishing equipment and supplies at the building located at the Shelby Street Boat Launch Ramp Facility for the period of August twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, through August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion. Are Steve and Tammy Hammer here tonight? Back there? Okay. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Commissioners, questions or comments? I know I joined my colleagues in just telling you how happy we are to see that space reactivated, or we will be happy to see it reactivated so that you can provide services. We frequently bike by there, and it's a shame to see it close so many years, and it's just great to see that it get reactivated. So good luck to both of you. I hope you are very successful financially, because that's what we want for you. If there are no further questions or comments, Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances, please.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Those ordinances are adopted. Ms. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is a one-year agreement with Steve and Tammy Hammer, doing business as Sandusky Bait Company, for the operation of a retail business for the sale of bait and tackle, convenience items, food, beverages, and fishing equipment and supplies at the building located at the Shelby Street Boat Launch Ramp Facility for the period of August twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, through August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion. Are Steve and Tammy Hammer here tonight? Back there? Okay. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Commissioners, questions or comments? I know I joined my colleagues in just telling you how happy we are to see that space reactivated, or we will be happy to see it reactivated so that you can provide services. We frequently bike by there, and it's a shame to see it close so many years, and it's just great to see that it get reactivated. So good luck to both of you. I hope you are very successful financially, because that's what we want for you. If there are no further questions or comments, Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item number two, we'd need a motion to approve the fiscal officer's certificate prior to the reading of the ordinance.
And you left a note right on my monitor, so I wouldn't forget to do that.
Sure did.
And I still forgot. So would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of the fiscal officer's certificate.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion. All favor signified by saying aye. No? Aye. Roll call. Oh, she got me again. Ms. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item number two, we'd need a motion to approve the fiscal officer's certificate prior to the reading of the ordinance.
And you left a note right on my monitor, so I wouldn't forget to do that.
Sure did.
And I still forgot. So would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of the fiscal officer's certificate.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion. Mr. Soloway, maybe you could just give us a refresher. I mean, you occasionally, you, we, your team goes out to the bond market periodically and sells these notes, which is how we raise short-term funds. And I think you've been remarkably successful in maintaining really low interest rates for us by keeping these in short-term funds. Just give us an idea, please, of how that process works, and what you anticipate will be the interest rate that we would pay when we go to market.
Sure. First of all, to sort of summarize what's on the table tonight, there is no additional new money that we are looking to borrow for, so these are all projects that we've talked about in prior years. Last year, we did add the landing project, so that's kind of the only new item that came up last year. So what'll happen next is, yeah, this is an issue that's, it's large enough that we will actually go out to bid, competitively bid these in the market, and we take the lowest rate. The Federal Reserve has recently lowered interest rates, so we are expecting very favorable interest rates, probably between one and two percent on these. I know last year when we did this, or I can double-check on what the exact interest rate was, but our net interest cost, I believe, was under two percent. And the reason why we do these as one-year notes is we like to maintain that access to the market in case we do need to borrow for projects that come up. We will ultimately bond these out at some point down the future, but by keeping notes open and renewing them every year, it gives us the flexibility to add projects to this or modify how much we want to pay down on a certain project if we decided to change our plans on that. So that's generally how that'll work. We will, once this passes, we will go to the market in early September, and I typically will report back through the manager's report who the winning bidder is and what the interest rate ended up being. So we will do that again this year, once they sell.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soloway. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Just one, just an explanation of the relationship between these bonds and the Capital Projects Fund. The ordinances, 127, 129, 125R, those were passed when they were under Capital Projects, which my impression was that we were paying for those and money existed for them, and now we're borrowing money to pay them. And I'm just confused on how that, I really don't understand, trying to understand how, when I see Capital Projects Fund, that's a fund that, with a certificate of funds, I assume the money's there. And now we've lumped it into a debt, so just trying to understand why.
Yeah, it's just a fund that all these projects are accounted for, so the certificate would be that the funds are in collection or in the process of being collected, so all these projects are all accounted for in the Capital Projects Fund. So that's one we borrow for, it'll go back to those funds.
Okay, so when we see a project that the financial information says Capital Projects Fund, it does not mean that it's like any, like a fund that has money in it? It means that you may have to go borrow money later to pay for whatever it is? Is that what you're suggesting, is that what that means? Is that what I should take from that?
No, it just depends on the exact item, like the one example I'll point out to, like the ladder truck, we're using EMS funds to pay for the ladder truck. So the ladder truck cost us one point two million dollars. We don't have one point two million dollars in EMS funds to certify. However, we do collect a significant amount of EMS funds each year, and we would pay that down over a period of time, so we would be able to certify, the money would be coming to pay that debt, but we don't say that we have all that money on hand at the time we borrow.
Which, yeah, that's understandable on the fire department, on a twenty-seven thousand dollar security program for the, for this building, going for, I wasn't expecting a note. Perhaps it would be in my interest in the future, let me see if I'm right, when a project comes across the table that it is under Capital Projects, if I want to know specifically if you're paying for it out of a fund, like we do many things, or if it's going to be financed later, then I should ask, as opposed to you just telling us about it, like perhaps putting it in the legislation, so we know the difference. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Touching on what Mr. Soloway said, when we use the EMS fund, how do we allocate what happens to the EMS fund? How do we distribute? So if we do have a need for a new truck or equipment of such, how do we allocate from that to the different areas of the city? And for the fire department, of course.
So I know with the EMS fund, the fire department typically does a five-year capital plan, and so at the time when we would purchase the ladder truck, we would have been in discussions many years prior to that, as far as the needs, the timing of doing that, and obviously, like I said, it was a large purchase, so that was a good example of something you want to finance over a period of time. So we would have worked out with the fire chief at that time, you know, sort of, sort of a maturity schedule of, hey, if we borrow the one point two million dollars, you know, if we paid down two hundred thousand a year, I think it's a six years, how does that impact your five-year capital plan? You know, when we did it at the time, there was no impact, it still gave them the flexibility to purchase equipment and things out of that fund. So that's kind of how the procedures were leading up to this, but since these have been already issued, we would just be working off of that five-year capital plan, which is a rotating one, and it gets updated constantly.
Right. My concern is, are we putting too much strain on the EMS fund? I mean, annually, we're collecting, what, a million? Somewhere around a billion dollars?
I believe the total collections for EMS overall is around eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. The first four hundred thousand goes to the general fund, the fund operations, so once we hit the four hundred, anything above four hundred goes to the EMS fund. So it does generate about four to five hundred thousand dollars a year in the capital in the EMS fund, just from EMS revenues.
And then roughly another five hundred or so, five hundred thousand or so, is going to debts, debt repayment or loans?
This year, two hundred thousand is going to be paid down on it.
Okay.
On the fire truck.
What does that leave us with in the EMS fund annually? What's left over, basically?
We'd have to look at what the numbers are at year-end, because that number changes every day based on money that goes into it and expenses that get paid out of it. I know when we looked at the balance earlier this week, it was around maybe two or three hundred thousand dollars.
That's pretty close.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that was something we had talked about many years ago, when we made changes to the ordinance to try to use some of that.
Right.
You know, to get that out and demolish some of these blighted and unsafe structures. I believe we are sort of at the tail end of that. I know we committed the $150,000 at the last commission meeting that will probably get spent next year. I know Mr. Lasco is tracking what's left. I think we're close to the end as far as what we've committed to use from the EMS fund for demolition, so I mean, our intent would be to start building that fund up again.
Yeah, that would be.
That would be our goal.
But my last point is just to make sure that we are, we have enough reserve for the equipment and things that we do need in the fire department. I understand that some of it has to go to other things, but I think that we've got to be really conscious of the EMS fund, because that's truly the source for our safety services.
Yep, and we talk constantly, both chiefs and myself, about the EMS fund. We have conversations several times a year to monitor that, and I think everybody's kind of aware where we're at, as far as the balance and sources and uses of it, so surprises.
So Chief Wilcox, it would be perhaps helpful, not so long ago, I asked you, and you were able to provide me with the updated capital improvement projects for the fire department, and as I recall the format, it has sources and uses anticipated out over the next number of years. It's in balance, because we anticipate buying equipment, and most communities like ours, where there's a major equipment purchase, we do finance that, because it's paid for by the users who are using it over a period of time, which includes in the future. I don't think any communities, unless they're uber wealthy, maybe here in township, I don't know, are paying cash for vehicles. But perhaps you could share that with the commission, so that we have the same level assurance that I did after looking at that budget, and maybe it needs to be updated with Mr. Soloway's input as well, I'm not sure, because I don't recall the exact format, but perhaps if you could share that with the commission, it would provide a level of comfort, so that we all understand that the funds are available for the equipment that we need going forward.
Yes, sir. To you, Mr. President. We are, again, as the finance director has explained, we are often having conversations about EMS fund in regards to the rolling stock. So currently, right now, we're going to have another meeting next month in terms of where our schedule is going to be moving forward. In terms of where we're at in regards to the ladder truck, where we're anticipating paying that off in the next few years, also in relation to, you know, whatever we need in terms of replacing, let's say, for instance, a pumper or ambulance, those conversations will take place again, just so we'll know where we're at in terms of making sure we make purchases that wouldn't put us in, I guess you could say, dire straits or anything, or just exhausting EMS fund. So we want to be on a more responsible schedule that we can kind of anticipate, the city can absorb that cost.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I didn't mean to jump into the, if you're currently discussing this, then that's, as far as I'm concerned, whenever you're finished with that process, if you'd present that to the commission, that was something that we used to do as a matter of course, some years ago, I think we got out of that practice, but whenever you're finished, I think it would be helpful for us to see that.
Somebody else, Mr. Lockhart?
I mean, you kind of touched on it, I was just going to ask if there was any anticipated purchases or needs in the fire department, but it kind of leans into what you were just saying.
Yeah.
About the current discussion that you may have going on, and so we can wait and see what, if there's any anticipated purchases, after you've had a discussion with the finance director.
Okay, so the legislation for us, before us, just to bring us back to center, is for the approval of the sale of various notes and the motion and amendments that were made earlier. Further discussion on that motion and amendment, the legislation. If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of playground surfacing from David Williams and Associates Game Time of Alliance, Ohio, at Huron Park, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension, in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I'm thrilled that we keep improving our parks, and good job to the rec. department in pushing us, thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Do we have a, some sort of presentation? I understand that there's a big change in terms of moving the equipment, just something that says what we're doing, why, if they're moving it, and what's going to be in place of where the current equipment is, and how do we arrive at that?
Mr. Worthing is here, and as the head of our recreation department, if you could answer the commissioners' questions, and there were a couple other questions that came from the audience that I want to make sure we addressed as well, please.
Sure. Through you, Commission President, to Mr. Poole. This has been about a year and a half project total for getting the equipment purchased, getting the surfacing in. We've had a little bit of weather delays, as May and June wasn't as great as we had hoped. As far as the project, we did meet with in June of last year, we talked with, we had two sessions, one was a public session in the morning, in the afternoon, with our kids in Huron Park through our summer parks program. We showed them kind of different equipment, different things that they would have liked, and they chose, and then we had an afternoon public session, and these were both at the pergola at the greenhouse right in Huron Park. Public sessions to have the kids in the community come out and kind of choose what kind of equipment goes out, goes in the park. Commissioner Poole, I think, did request we look into surfacing, the surfacing instead of the engineered wood fiber, and we looked into that and found that the price had come down in past several years of what we thought it was going to be and compared to what it is. And so we've had also other community members ask to look into surfacing rather than engineered wood fiber, so we were able to do that for this park, it'll be the first park with that type of surfacing down, kind of keeps mulch from getting into the splash pad area. We also, I should have went back to this, we had, the kids also in community decided where it was going to go, whether it would go in the same spot that the current playground is set, or if it would be moved next to splash pad, and it was overwhelming to have it moved next to the area of the splash pad, right next to it. We're going to add a shelter, I think that's later on in maybe tonight's meeting, a shelter in between both the splash pad and the playground equipment. And I think to Mr. Schwanger's question, the new playground equipment will have a swing set, a climbing structure, and a series of like ramps placed structure for the toddlers and anyone who has like a disability can use that side. So we're, the old playground equipment that, I think it has the climbing area, will be taken out. I believe we have new swings coming in with this new one, so the old swings will be coming out. And there is a play area with, for like the younger kids that may stay, like the older equipment for the younger kids may stay across in that, in that section.
There was a question about security provided for that.
We have not yet set how the security, I'll talk with Chief Orzak about bumping up possibly patrols through Huron Park, or talk with the contractor on what their, how they handle that, and maybe a camera or something we can get to kind of watch that area.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, question?
Cool.
How many, how many days do you have to have this security? I'm sorry, I got.
Seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours.
Okay, and thank you for sharing, sharing that with the public, you know, people they like to hear, and I'm glad you've done a good job, it was well planned, and sharing it ahead of time will make a lot of people happy, and we won't be nitpicking what you did, because they know what you've done.
We can't wait till it's done.
I know, it's going to be very nice, thank you.
I want to share my pleasure also, that Mr. Waddington had shared about getting another park taken care of, but it had been so long ago that we'd voted on this before, I had to ask Mr. Wolfser, hey, what's going over there in Huron Park? Because I'd forgotten that we'd approved that a year ago, so, or more than, so, good to see us finally get it done. Additional questions or comments regarding this legislation?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I think there was an additional question regarding the clause that the successful contractor used regarding prevailing wage, and I believe that that specifically speaks to how the project is funded, and if you haven't, if you don't have an answer for it, I think that I do.
Okay, I don't?
In my, in my experience, the prevailing wage is tied to how the project is funded, and it's funded with federal money, federal grant dollars. Typically, it could be a requirement of prevailing wage. It appears that we are funding this with capital project funds, so I don't believe that it is a requirement that we pay prevailing wage. The contractor, by making that statement, is just protecting himself, he's stating out loud that he does not have money in there to pay the prevailing wage, which is a higher wage than he would normally pay. I would think that's something that, you know, that we would want to perhaps have our law department look into and verify that, and don't take to Brady's interpretation of that.
Mr. Heyberger, if I want to get a legal opinion, I'm going to turn to you.
That's my suggestion.
Anything to add to what Mr. Brady said?
The only thing I would add is that I believe it's under the threshold amount. There's a certain threshold that the project has to be for a repair like that, I think it's $78,000 or so, I think it's under the amount, so that's why we don't have to worry about prevailing wage.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments on this legislation, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Worthing. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a shelter from play and park structures of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for Huron Park, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Because I see that $4,000 will be reimbursed by the Erie Metro Parks Board of Park Commissioners towards this project.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Lions Park Shoreline Revetment Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Poole?
Just like a description of what they're doing and some estimate of how long this is going to last.
Mr. Klein, are you able to add to, address the commissioners' questions?
Sure. Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. What they're doing is they're essentially extending the treatment that was done earlier this year. We expended some funds to purchase stone and to place that rock out there on the worst section, the section that was closest to the bike path that goes around Lions Park, but we didn't have enough funds at that time. Actually, what happened was, is when a grant didn't get awarded, we looked at the capital budget, saw that we might be able to protect the park and do this work, we originally had $50,000 in the budget, we spent the original 20, and when that grant wasn't awarded, we spoke internally about seeing if we could make sure that we got the longevity out of that shoreline. So, so what we're doing is we're going to be installing that rock, we're going to be pulling out the concrete that's out there. The remaining concrete, I know a lot was pulled out 10, 12 years ago, eight years ago, and we're going to be reinforcing that wall. We did look in 2017 to figure out what it would take to reestablish the original breakwater, and that was, at that time, estimated over half a million dollars, so this is a large savings, spending about $100,000 to do this work. Now, as far as longevity, that's going to be very dependent on the winters we get, the ice, how things move in and out, but, I mean, with a revetment like this, you should be able to get, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, but it's going to depend on the weather, the waves, the ice, those types of things.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments? If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. And it was, is with great regret that we have to consider the next item. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number six, which contemplates a turn in the weather that we don't want to think about at the end of August?
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase two 2019 single axle snow and ice control truck equipment packages from Henderson Products Incorporated of Bucyrus, Ohio, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Division of Streets and Traffic, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Red Barn Engineering Incorporated of Kenmore, Washington, for the McCartney Road Reconstruction Storm Sewer and Storm Pump Station Design Project, and relating to the Barrett Road Culvert Replacement, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Lockhart?
Just in brief, could the engineer explain how the culvert may or may not impact anyone's property?
Mr. Klein?
Through you, Mr. President. The storm sewers that would be installed on McCartney Road will go through an easement into an existing ditch called the mixed ditch, and that ditch is where we're, at the north end of that ditch is where we're going to be putting this lift station. The culvert then goes under Barrett Road into another ditch, so we are looking for easements right now from some of the property owners. There's one property owner that we need a permanent easement from, and several other property owners that we need temporary easement, so that we can get in there and dredge the ditch properly. So we will be affecting about five or six properties right in that area, and we are working through bringing those easements to fruition, so we can finally bid this project.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item eight is an ordinance amending ordinance number 19-114, passed on June 24, 2019, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amended agreement for professional design services with the Manick and Smith Group Incorporated of Mami, Ohio, for the Megs Street reconstruction and multi-use path project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item eight is an ordinance amending ordinance number 19-114, passed on June 24, 2019, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amended agreement for professional design services with the Manick and Smith Group Incorporated of Mami, Ohio, for the Megs Street reconstruction and multi-use path project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Secondly, the Knights of Columbus, number 546, the Sandusky branch donated a best coastal small town in the USA banner valued at $275 to be displayed at the intersection of Columbus and Washington. They were very excited to make that donation, and I'd ask for a motion to accept it.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks. It's a really nice-looking sign I saw up over the weekend.
It's great. For the Police Department, new and old business. I'm sure many of you saw this, but our officer, Darian Cook, was featured on A&E's Live Rescue Hero of the Week for his quick actions in improvising a dog leash to use as a tourniquet to stop the bleeding of a teen gunshot victim, which likely saved the victim's leg. This post on A&E had over 186,000 views. And obviously, that was a really brave act. And I watched it, and it was a pretty scary moment and a lot of quick thinking. And I know everybody has seen it, and we can't really thank him enough. But it's a testament to, you know, Chief Orzek and the young team that he's really put together there that are serving the city very well. With the Public Works Department, there's a traffic update for Shoreline Drive. Improvements on Jackson Street between Shoreline and Water are complete, and Jackson will be open to all traffic starting tomorrow, August 27. The intersection at Water and Jackson has transitioned to a four-way stop with the bumpouts to improve safety at this location. Wayne Street between Shoreline and Water is now closed to all vehicular traffic, and parking is prohibited in that area. And we did that transition to a four-way stop. That intersection was based both on our own observation of speeding in that area. We've had a lot of new businesses open on that side of downtown, plus the improvements to the Jackson Street parking lot have made that more popular. And we had many downtown residents and stakeholders reach out, so we're very thankful for Public Works to be able to add that improvement into the project. Also, streets and traffic has added some of the asphalt grindings from Follow Street to Alliance Park pathway. This will allow for easier access for paddlers from the new drop-off area to the waterfront. In addition, last August, Commission requested a staff report on savings resulting from the Commission's approval to purchase a Mr. Manhole for about $24,000. At the time, staff estimated the return on investment to be about 12 months. With adjusting 30 manholes over the past year, which equals to about $25,539,000, the return on investment was actually about a 10-month period. So thank you for, you know, making that choice to invest. Also, the city met with ODNR, the Ohio Lake Erie Commission, and the US EPA recently to conduct fieldwork at the western side of the Cedar Point Causeway and Landing Park. These organizations are currently prioritizing Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funding for coastal wetlands and habitats restoration throughout the Great Lakes. So we're very hopeful to potentially receive some of that federal funding for continued investment in protecting Lake Erie and Sandusky Bay. The city has received approval from the US EPA to extend the Brownfields contract through September of 2020. There's approximately 138,000 remaining in those funds, which Public Works, working with community development, have done a really good job to create that pipeline of projects that, either for demolition or remediation, we've been able to take a lot of the blight out of the city. So we're happy to see that extension. Also, streets and traffic have completed the in-house resurfacing project on Follow Street between Columbus and Wayne, and have been hard at work repainting school zones throughout the city, which I can vouch for. I've seen them doing that as I've walked around. And we also want to congratulate Jason Haynes for his promotion from plant operator to plant maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant. Moving on to community development, an update on the Lamb Bank property of 1215 Central Avenue. After completion of four public walk-throughs, the city had a total of 25 attendees interested in potentially substantially rehabilitating and preserving the historic home bids, which included the scopes of work and evidence of financial capacity, are due to the city on September 9, and will be reviewed by the Lamb Bank Committee prior to making a recommendation to the City Commission. And for the Planning Department, just an update that the last day of the operation of the South Side Splash Pad will be on Labor Day. Also, the final Walk Wayne High Cancock event is scheduled for September 11. The Regular Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August 28, has been canceled due to no applications submitted. The Regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for Thursday, September 19, is scheduled for 4:30 p.m., right here in the City Commission Chambers at 2:40 Columbus Ave. And the Regular Landmark Commission meeting scheduled for September 18, at 4:30 p.m. at 2:40 Columbus Ave, will also take place in the City Commission Chambers. And then finally, the Regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 17, at 5:00 p.m., will also take place in City Hall in the Commission Chambers. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
Chairman, this last week, I've had a few people ask me about a piece of legislation that we passed at our last meeting regarding some street repairs that we anticipate making if we're awarded with a grant represented by this map that we were given. And I wonder if, through Mr. Whoopsir, if Mr. Klein would be so kind to just kind of give us a refresher on how that, how we pick those streets. Some people, I think, I could tell from the questions I got, they think that we pull these out of a hat. And I'm pretty sure that is not your method of selecting the streets, Mr. Klein. So if you can share this exactly how that works, I think it'll be very helpful.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President. Yeah, in 2015, we did a pavement condition rating analysis of every street throughout the entire city. We're still working off of that list, and all of these streets were the lowest-rated streets on that list from 2015. The only ones that we removed from that list were dead-end roads, which are usually two houses, maybe four houses on there. And the reason for that was because the funding opportunity does not allow us to pave for those, on those dead-end streets.
Thank you.
Additional, I'm sorry. Additional questions or comments for the city manager? If not, then we'll turn to old business. Anyone having any items of old business? Anyone have any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Lockhart?
I've said this before, and it's come up a few times, and I've heard from some, a lot of residents and local business people in regards to cable access, broadband, internet services. And essentially, a long time ago, local municipalities, villages had control of their franchise agreements, which would meant their cable access and then also their internet access, broadband services. And since probably the last several years, and the law director can correct me if I go astray, the state, State of Ohio, has taken away those franchise agreements and controlled them at the state level through, I believe, the Department of Commerce, and, which basically locked municipalities, villages, into the agreement that they signed originally, meaning there's generally one provider in our area, Buckeye Cable, and I think they run all the way through Toledo. Now, getting into this, there are great people who work for the cable company. There are a lot of great people who have good jobs and things like that, and they do provide the best job that they can for the service that they're, that they intend to do as far as the people who work and labor. However, the corporations that control cable and broadband access have continued to increase the rates, and from my perspective, to charge us more and give us less. And recently, the FCC has decided to take control away from the states and move that, I believe as of August 1, they put into effect where it would take away completely any local control from the state or from the municipality, and would impact quite a few things going forward so that we would no longer have any say-so over what happens in broadband and cable. So just to take a step back, there's a thing called the Cable Act of 1984. Some of you may know about it, some of you don't. That Cable Act of 1984 was a, put out by the FCC, and it allowed local cities, villages like ours, to make agreements with the cable companies to get a royalty that that money would be paid into our cities. So we would make money off the services that they provided for the citizens, and that was up to around 5%. Currently, with this new bill through, or I don't know if you want to call it a bill, but it's a rule through the FCC, they will allow to, a deduction from the cable companies to take away any in-kind services or non-cash parts of the agreement, and it will allow them to deduct that from the 5% that they pay to the cities. Meaning, in some of these agreements, the agreement asks that the cable provider would provide infrastructure, transmission lines, to parts of your city where there is no cable or broadband. So at this point, most of our area is covered by broadband. And in that original agreement, it may not have all been required, and some of it is in-kind. And basically, to sum it up, they're allowed to take a huge deduction and deduct that from the money that they pay to the city, meaning that the 5% that we would normally get, we may not get at all. And in this new FCC rule, they will be taking away, potentially taking away, things like public access channels. So no more Sesame Street, Mr. Rogers, Dora the Explorer, that kind of thing will be limited. And we will not have a say-so in the rate increases that go on much further. And I'd ask the law director to kind of weigh in on his opinions of some of the stuff that he might have read, if you've got anything to put in onto this, before I go any further on it.
Through you, Commission President. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So just to kind of summarize, what I'm saying is I'm looking for the support, I guess, the rest of the Commission, to send some sort of resolution to our state reps and our local Congress in the regards that we are not getting what we're paying for. We're paying more, and we're getting less and less, and all of our local control is going to be gone away.
And I, you and I talked about it before the meeting, and I appreciate your staying on top of this issue. I would support sending a resolution along the lines that you've suggested, and I think it would be appropriate for someone to ask, to make a motion to ask the law director to prepare that resolution so that we could communicate our displeasure with the direction that cable offerings, prices, and quality are taking and may take in the future. And I'm glad that you pointed out the difference between the rapacious organization that is Buckeye Cable and Cablevision, and the really great people who work locally, because there are, I know quite a number of them, and they are really good people. I'm sure you know many of the same.
Right.
So would someone care to make a motion along those lines?
I'd make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to send a resolution to our state rep and our United States representatives.
Second.
Then a motion and second, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I'm sure that we'll hear from Mr. Heiburger soon. Thank you. Additional items of new business? Then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on the items of city business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Mr. Stuckey, good to see you back. It's been a while.
Maybe, maybe not. I got something to distribute to the commissioners.
Why don't you hand it to Mr. Heiburger, and he'll distribute it.
Well, they got to go to, I only have so many copies, so I'm, it's six to the committee.
We'll get it.
Yeah, Hammond. I got to make sure everybody gets what they're supposed to get here.
Well, if we have to, a couple of us can share.
There should be seven here. This would go to the seven commissioners. This one here would go to Mr. Whoopsir. This one here, I'll take care of Chief Orzek. And, I would have walked it over, you know.
And this one to the law director.
I have an extra one. Oh, I know who this is. Could you please pass this down to Mr. Klein? I did this for a reason, because I'm not going to try to read through all the charts and everything. You guys can look at the charts. Tim Stuckey, 1307 Fifth Street. Fifth Street, the one-minute mile, the Fifth Street Dragway. I, a resident of Fifth Street, request the city commissioners to enforce the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Please consider roundoff errors. And Fifth is a fraction of over one mile in length. Thank you to Mr. Klein's people that explained to me how many feet I had to work with. Now, as in looking at the time needed to travel those speeds, I'm not going to review all that. You guys have that in front of you. Looking at the chart, one would should note that the speed of 25 and 40 mile an hour, the difference is 37 seconds. The minute mile is 63 mile an hour. In looking at the graph, GLYPH, I don't know what they call that, but it's the police reports, you will find that all the listed speeds have appeared on the reports within the last three months. And it goes on to the second page. It's quite lengthy. But the thing is, it's only three months. We haven't talked about the other nine months of the year. It started on 6/1 according to after review of all that graph thing, police report thing, and it ended on August 5. I had to communicate with Mr. Orzek, and I don't know what the problem is about trying to come back down there and start enforcing this again, but the month of August is almost gone. Now, so the average of that report is 45 mile an hour. The police chief and the city manager have both had concerns and have come up to speed to address this situation. I have had contacts with various city commissioners. We and them need to get action to address this unsafe condition. The dragway has to cease. I believe we are done talking about this, and we need to take some action to control it. Child crosswalks at Ontario and Fifth, stop signs at Fifth in Ontario, the school guard will thank you. I know her personally. Because of the small right-of-ways along the curb on Fifth, the south side is a concern, as the boulevard's only about two feet, if it's that, maybe 33 inches. Safety of the children is at stake soon to be the first and second graders at the new We don't have to wait the next year. We could start doing this now, because all the kids are on my street now. The neighborhood has changed. We have a lot of kids on the street. The old is gone, and the new is coming. Our situation has increased with the posting of a speed limit on Scott Street to 35. Fifth Street is posted at 25. I noticed one interesting fact. The squad does not seem to access speed with the street about 25-foot wide. These firemen won't even drive the speeds that these people are driving, and they're going to a rescue. So of you, the commissioners, is going to make a motion, so of you, the commissioners, is going to make a motion to bring the topic back to the next city commission meeting in the near future with remedies. Thank you, Tim Stuckey.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey, for bringing your concerns forward.
Anybody want? Give this to Mrs.
I got it.
Oh, you got it. She'll have one? Okay. Here's the next one. Thank you.
There are others present who wish to address the Commission on a city, a city business topic?
There was a lady at the last meeting. She was asking about ambulance fees and the EMS fund. The ambulance fees, the basic fee is $430. The advanced life support is 500, and the advanced two life support is 625. Collections come from 50% Medicare, 30% Medicaid, 20% private insurance. Now, it starts to get murky. I asked about what was in the EMS balance, and staff told me $196,000. However, 89,000 of revenue was posted incorrectly to the EMS fund. Should have went into another fund. So you take 89,000 off of the 196, and you got 107 left in the EMS fund, and whatever you get for the rest of the year. My concern is two things. Last meeting, you passed $150,000 grant going to Booter and Company, and that's payable at the end of the year when their project is done. That grant was not certified. I want to know why the grants are not being certified. It's a lot of money going out here, and it looks like you're short in funds here. So it doesn't look like you have enough money here to me. And with that error, that's a big error. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
To back up on dealing with the EMS fund, the ongoing discussions with the chief and the finance department about money with what she just said there, would you folks be sure to include, when you report back to us, first of all, how much money actually is in the funds, so we have some idea, and perhaps be able to track over the last two years the direction it went, along with what, what is the estimate of how much money needs to be in there for us to be comfortable with the purchases that you need to make? It's like, where are we now in terms of how, the condition of the ambulances or whatever it is that you, the major equipment is all I'm concerned with? How much money is a comfortable spot for us to have in there if we have less than $100,000 in it? And we're talking about an ambulance with X number of miles that need to be replaced, And we're talking about an ambulance with X number of miles that need to be replaced, whatever you're, shortly? Just need to know from finance how we plan on handling that, if it, if it matters, whether there's $20,000 in there at the time, or if you need a couple hundred thousand dollars to feel comfortable with moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul, and I understood the earlier conversation that you shared with us, Chief Wilcox, to, to include exactly that, or address exactly that concern. And if I may suggest, in the past, we've had a little bit of background, we received, I haven't seen it in a number of years, and I think with the commission, maybe the public would do well to have a refresher in terms of, how does we collect these funds? We bill them out, there's a certain amount we don't collect, there's a certain amount we do collect, and just to kinda give us a, a bigger budgetary picture of how the EMS fund works and how those billings work in practice. Be helpful. Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. The issue I'd like to speak about at this time is skateboarding in the downtown business district and possibly providing a solution. A lot of times, you know, we hear that people that come to this podium, or at other meetings, don't offer solutions, so I'm gonna offer a solution this evening. Over the weekend, I sent an email to Chief of Police Orzak and asked whether or not the skateboard rules, which is ordinance 373.11, which prohibits skateboarding in the downtown business district, whether or not that law had been laxed or no longer being enforced. The answer I received back, and I have utmost respect for, for the police chief, he does a fantastic job, so does his, his police officers, but the answer I got back is that it's been determined somewhere, somehow, some way, that that is not any longer a priority issue for downtown Sandusky. Perhaps the issue is not skating, boarding in the overall downtown, maybe we can allow that as part of a solution, but then prohibit skateboarding in like Mylander Plaza, Dalke Park, and any place where we have very good potential for damage. And I can tell you this, back in 1980, when this law was put on the books, that was the thought, is that there was damage being incurred at some of these parks. The response I received back is that there hasn't been any complaints, or there hasn't been any, any concerns shared with the police chief to enforce it. I do have, I do wanna read a statement from one of the members from the Sandusky Greenhouse that was on social media towards the end of last week, and it reads as this, "A young, two young men were using Dalke Park, the Dalke Park walls for skateboarding. We asked them as citizens to stop, and they did stop, until we walked through the park, and then they hastily continued using the walls for skateboarding. A handful of years ago, the friends of the greenhouse paid to have Dalke Park retucked and repointed." So again, I would suggest that this commission staff come to some kind of an agreement that if we have to enforce that law, enforce it. If it's outdated, either take it off the books or amend it to not allowing skateboarding in specific parks and, and place appropriate signage. Just to let you know, I'm not against skateboarding, that's another thing, I don't wanna be labeled against skateboarding. I've been a longtime financial supporter of the skateboard park, I helped with the, with the young adults that, that did fundraising 15 years ago, however long ago it was. I have two benches in the back of my pickup truck as I'm speaking, that are gonna be donated by me at the skateboard park. So I don't want anybody to think I'm against skateboarding, I am entirely in favor, it keeps the kids off the street. I personally just don't wanna see damage to our parks downtown that I have to fix on my dime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
I made a list, as I, meeting, Arlene Thompson, 1902 Adrian Circle. As the meeting went on, I've heard some answers, so that my list is shorter, I'm glad to announce. I know I'm, here we go again, not supposed to ask questions, but I'd like to make a statement then. Would the city commission come back in two weeks, or whenever the next meeting is held, I think it's the holiday, and announce that they are or are not? I would like them to come to the meeting and bring it up, that they are or are not going to meet with the group that is growing daily about the Jackson Street Pier. We just want to sit down, we don't want to do away with it, we want to talk about it. We're not at a point, somebody on social media said, "Well, they can't stop that project now." Bunk burgers, as I used to tell my students. They can stop it if they want. They can stop it and reconvene with the people. And I'll ask you again, like I asked last year, give it to a vote, the democratic way. You all would not like to be out of the voting privilege, especially coming up in November, but give it back to the people. Money from issue eight for Washington Park. Okay, I read that article, it was a nice article. I read it online, not in the paper issue. Taken from sidewalk fund for Washington Park. That was for, and I will go back a couple years when they did Adrian Circle and I tried to fight it back then, they were gonna take those trees down, this is what we were told, everybody got a letter. No, they didn't. I didn't. Okay? And a neighbor didn't. They were going to take those, those trees down because they were heaving up the sidewalks. Well, section, or issue eight was supposed to be for that purpose of sidewalks, not for redoing the parks, which is really nice, I'm proud of our parks, but now they're going through, and I just heard that there's going to be more sidewalks done, and I asked the question, is it because of heaving sidewalks? Didn't get an answer, of course, but we were told, you either let us take your tree down, or you will be billed for taking that tree down and for fixing your sidewalks, and if you don't do it, we're going to fine you. That's what we were told. There was a gentleman who no longer works with the city, who was on our street several days, and he hated to see me come out the door. But, he told me, and, and I, I'm just here saying, he said, "That whole project, where you had to spend that money for the sidewalks, and it wasn't associated with the trees, had to be spent, or you would lose it. Now I'm seeing that there's still money that's dedicated for residential sidewalks because of heaving trees. Something's just not right." You know, I wonder, sitting back here, you all, I wanna file this under section 14, when do you all get together to talk about these things that you're passing under emergency? Is it, I know you all have jobs and, and things to do, you can't.
One minute.
Minute? Thank you. You come up here and everything's passed under emergency, and I'm thinking, we used to have the commissioners down at Mr. Smith's Coffee House, but when do we get a chance to address you, and when on earth you get a chance to talk about all these things you're just passing all the time under 14? It's, it's ridiculous. We're looking for money for Camp Street. The money that you are putting, $8 million plus, in Jackson Street Pier, I gotcha. I gotcha. You putting that money down there where we all didn't really want it, not all, you can't fix our streets. You're looking for money. What? Doesn't make sense, but I would like to have you all come back to the next meeting, I'm just saying, I'm not asking, and say, are you going to meet with the people of Jackson Street Pier? It's okay. You all know what I'm about, and I know what you're all about, and so does everyone else.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Hi, I'm Mercy Platt, 1217 Columbus Avenue. When we were talking a couple of years ago at a coffee with commissioners, and I may have brought this in front of the commission before, I'm concerned about the lack of crosswalks on Campbell Street and sidewalks for the kids that will be going to the school, what's Buchanan and Route 4, Hazav, that's the three to six year grade. They've done a lot of work, and I saw it all passed to do everything Camp Street East, but nothing east really of, of Hazav, maybe the streets, but there is no crosswalk south of the railroad tracks to Perkins Ave, none. And some of those streets do not even have sidewalks. And at the time, I was told, well, they'll handle that under the Safe Schools proposal, but they are not. Everything that I've read on the Safe Schools is only handling the other side, and I'm very concerned about the safety of our children in grades three through six, who once daylight savings time changes, will not have sidewalks or crosswalks to walk on. I wanna say Wisteria Hill area, whatever that was originally, Esmond Dairy, whatever, looks wonderful. My dog and I really appreciate it, the cats are not hiding behind all the debris and not having to pull my dog down the street. The only thing is, I've heard that the state owns the land, I'm kinda confused about that. Because we can't ask questions, there isn't this back and forth anymore, so we can't really get answers on things. I have a suggestion, maybe on the agenda for the next time we come, maybe there could be the answers to some of the questions, especially something like that, like who does own the Wisteria Hill land? The only other comment, I have two quick comments. One is that I think every house that was up there looked absolutely phenomenal. Those people have all put a lot of time, effort, energy, money into those houses, but as I was sitting there, I noticed there were a lot of neighborhoods that were not represented. South Side wasn't really represented, Garden District, and, by the way, Mr. Whoopsir, I never knew the, those, I've lived here 58 years and never knew those were the names of those neighborhoods. So now I have something to call them anyhow, I didn't see where those neighborhoods were represented, so I'm wondering if maybe some of our people are not, either they don't know how, or they, they're not getting the message, because I know there's some really phenomenal homes in those areas of people that maybe they didn't have a lot of money to refurbish the homes, but they're immaculate on the outside, and they have incredible flowers and stuff like that. So, maybe that's something, Talon isn't here anymore, so I couldn't talk to him about it, but maybe that's something we need to look at to include some of our other neighborhoods into those, those pride awards, maybe people that are not boastful enough, some people are not gonna nominate themselves, and maybe they need to be nominated for something that to do. The only other question I have is, I could not find where there are answers to the, ask the city the questions. I don't know if I'm not working the website right, or those questions, the answers are not available. So like, if Mr. Brady asks a question on there, "Am I not able," I know you can't answer questions, "Am I not able to see what he asked so that I don't ask the same thing?" I think that would help a lot if we could keep a running list of the questions that were asked, so that, you know, 'cause somebody could come up here and ask a bunch of things, like the Wisteria Hill with the state, does the state own it? A minute? Okay. If the Wisteria Hill property is actually owned by the state or not, you know, instead of coming up here every week and asking the same question. Right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Platt.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Paul.
I think it's a, a fair and reasonable question, when citizens ask us the, for discussion about services that they don't have, because we made a decision to spend money on other things, and in this case, it deals with Jackson Street Pier and, and Shoreline Drive. Individually, we as a commission, commissioners have the option to simply ignore them. I suggest that in the long run, for the community, we're better off having a, a meeting with, and if the decisions that we've made are such wonderful decisions, that we have the conversation that lays out why we think it's so important to do whatever it is that we've done with their money, and give them the opportunity to, and take the opportunity to try to convince them that, that what we've done is best. Clearly, they don't believe that. Just suggesting, so we have, it's individual vote, and the, the five-vote majority you have will decide whether or not we meet with these folks or not. I just suggest that long-term, our community's better off if we're actually working with, and given the appearance that we actually care about the minority opinions. Additionally, with regard to no questions at the commission meeting, it seems to be a sticking point, I'd like to point out, in spite of what has been laid out, the actual commission rules and regulations state that audience participation, open discussion on any items, five-minute limit, and it's clearly written in the rules. So the concept of, you may not ask any questions, is kinda contrary to what actually the rules state, which say, audience participation, open discussion. We don't have to answer any questions, that I fully understand, but to represent that they're not allowed to, so that people stumble through their presentation, thinking that they're, that they've been banned by some rule, when it's clearly shown in our rules and regu- rules that it's open discussion. So, thank you.
Ms. Paul, anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Greetings, Tom Lamarcas, 20648 Street. First of all, thank you for the recent hires with the safety services, I believe one police officer and two firemen this year, so we're still understaffed, hopefully you'll take a good look at that. East Fallon Street off of Columbus Avenue is looking great, I'm sure those residents there really do appreciate it. I don't use that street, but I did go through it a few times in, in the past, and it was just a big chuck hole, so it's a great improvement. And with that stated, I hope that you'll take a look at the Venice Road section from Cold Creek Bridge East, where Venice Road then turns into Barrett Road and McCartney Road. You've got some work going on out there, but there's about a thousand to 1,500-foot section that is an absolute nightmare, and for a motorcyclist like myself, I'm riding on the berm to avoid the chuck holes, it's an obstacle course. I'm getting a little older, it's getting to be a little bit more challenging, but please add that to your list of projects if, if at all possible, or at least fill in the holes, because it's, it is, again, it's a nightmare. And I know that you are aware that there are a lot of streets in the, in the city that need some work, but that's one that's bad. The Jackson Street Pier, I know you're tired of hearing about it, but suddenly, the pumping has stopped, I guess that's, in my opinion, that's a good thing, but my concern is, what were they pumping out of the ground that was going onto the pier, seeping then into the ground, dispersing into the bay? Are we gonna be concerned a year, five years, 10 years down the road of the contamination that was pumped onto that pier and allowed to filter through the stone base that they had there, back into the bay? We won't know until the fish start floating, the kids start getting ill from swimming, et cetera. So, you know, we've made that mess, and now we're gonna have to live with it, and I'm really concerned about that. The project is referred to as, as a design-build project, we've heard that a number of times from the commission. So I hope that you'll consider that there's still time to forego building the proposed rental building, that we really don't have a use for yet, but we're just gonna build that beautiful building for somebody to hopefully rent and use, and if you could lower the elevation of Theater Hill that you're proposing there, because it's gonna block the views of the lake, so if you could just drop that down even a couple of feet, perhaps everyone would be a little happier with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lamarcas. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Kim Aberhart, 618 Sycamore Line. Thank you for still letting the public come up here and speak. As far as getting answers, I just wanted to kinda make a statement, it's kind of an example, example of a situation that I had recently, and I think that it's still important for the public to be able to ask questions and get their answers answered. My specific example, I had asked a city employee through an email, I'm not gonna mention any names up here, but I had asked the employee, per the Ohio Open Records Law, "Could you please provide me with copies of the Corps of Engineers permit and the EPA permit for the Jackson Street Pier project?" After some back and forth, I was told specifically, "The design-build contractor has determined that an EPA permit to install is not needed for the sewer or water on the pier." Nowhere in my request did I say anything about a permit specifically to install. This is how employees, this is like how the words were played, and so I didn't even get the answer that I requested, I requested just a permit. Give me the permit. Give me the permit. I was told that the permit to install doesn't exist. Like I said, nowhere did I use the word install ever in any of my emails. And then through another source, I was given proof of an EPA permit. So that's, I mean, that's just one example of where it's important for us to still be able to come up here. It's important for us to be able to ask questions. And if the answers aren't given at that specific meeting, that's okay, but it's important for us to be able to get answers. I mean, that's what you guys are here for. You guys are here to serve the community and to do these great projects. But when we have questions, we should be able to get honest answers. And if I'm asking a city employee and I'm not getting an honest answer, that's why I come up here, because I want an honest answer. So for me to get, for me to be able to get an answer through another source, I might not get the answer, the correct, like, the most open and honest answer that there is. So, I mean, that's the main reason why I came up here, is just to give that example and to show how important it is for us to be able to get answers, ask questions. I would like to say the downtown's looking nice. One suggestion that I would have is if you're going to make the downtown a walkable area, maybe put in some more benches. We do have a lot of elderly in the city, and they can't, they can't walk that far. So to ask them to walk blocks, it might not be possible. So some more benches would be nice down there. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
I'm not addressing, getting my phone.
Understood. Anyone else? If not, then the chair will entertain a motion to convene, I mean, adjourn.
Adjourn. Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned.[1798.63]